All right, I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the common council of the city of Plattville for Tuesday, September 11th, and we'll start with roll call.
Robin Klein?
Here.
Don Francis?
Here.
Barbara Stockhausen?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Sina Sharp?
Here.
Barbara Dos?
Here.
We're going to start this evening with a special presentation to acknowledge Kevin Hall's 32 years of service to the city of Plattville.
Yes, this is another one in our long list of employees with more than 30 years of service that have retired from the city. And Kevin's last day was actually Friday. He couldn't be with us today because he's already off on his new adventures. But we wanted to take a moment to recognize him with this proclamation in recognition of his 32 years of outstanding service and dedication to the city of Plattville. Whereas Kevin Hall has faithfully served the city of Plattville since 1986, and whereas Kevin has shown his commitment to the city of Plattville by maintaining his water operator license during the entire 32 years, and whereas Kevin has served loyally, when a tornado took out power to all four sewer lift stations for nearly 24 hours, he helped develop and implement an emergency plan that was able to avoid any sewer spills or overflows. And whereas Kevin has embodied the spirit of public service and faithfully diligently and honestly executing his duties, in 2008, he received a letter from city manager Dave Burner committing him for performance in a selfless act of extinguishing a fire at 995 Westwood Court preventing fire damage to the house. And whereas Kevin has led his crew during the highly demanding lead service line replacement program while continuing to perform the required maintenance and support construction projects, whereas Kevin's professional talents have helped to make the Plattville community a better place to live, work, and play. Now therefore, I, Karen M. Kurt, city manager of the city of Plattville, on behalf of the common council and city employees, both past and present, do hereby wish to express our sincere appreciation to Kevin for his dedication and service to the city. So we'll give him a round of applause even though he's not here.[136.12][136.12][applause]
All right. Next is a public hearing. Resolution 1819, conditional use permit, 1425 East Business Highway 151, and we'll start with staff presentation.
Okay, yeah, the request for 1425 East Business Highway 151, it's the former Kmart property. The applicant, Amerco Real Estate Company, is interested in purchasing that property. They would like to use it for a U-Haul moving and storage facility. So that would involve, obviously, the rental of the U-Haul trucks, trailers, and so forth, the sale of moving-related supplies that U-Haul typically does, trailer hitches, boxes, that sort of thing. And also as part of that, they would like to do self-storage use within that building and outside the building. So basically, inside the existing building, they would have, divide that up into basically small containers, if you would, for people to lease those for storage purposes, whether they're just for long-term storage of their own things or if they're in the process of moving either one. So they would, that part of it is the part that requires a conditional use permit. The leasing of the trucks and trailers is actually a specified use in that district. So the consideration tonight for the conditional use is the warehouse portion of that proposed use. So kind of a longer-term plan that goes with that is if they are able to fill the building, they would also propose to construct additional storage buildings. And their plan is submitted, they had a spot identified on the east side of the building area that's kind of a grass area and vehicle parking and loading area, that they would construct some additional storage buildings if needed. They would have the existing parking lot in front of the store, part of that would be used for the display of the leased vehicles, the rental vehicles, and then obviously for customer-employee parking. The business will have approximately 15 employees, a combination of full-time and part-time. Our operation will be 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Fridays, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Saturdays, and 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Sundays. So according to the ordinance with the conditional use permit, that it would be approved if the uses and structures are in accordance with the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance and are found not to be hazardous, harmful, offensive, or otherwise adverse to environment or the value of neighborhood or the community. In this particular case, when you look at the use, that particular area is primarily business along the highway, but there are storage, self-storage uses in the vicinity, behind the bowling alley, behind the advanced auto parts, Rose Meyer Clinic Building, there are storage buildings, and to the south is the Industry Park, which obviously has a variety of similar-type uses. One of the concerns that came up at the plan commission meeting was the appearance of the property, specifically what other kinds of storage might be included in that type of use. So there was some discussion about whether there should be outside storage of RVs or boats or campers or that type of thing. The applicant has indicated that is not part of their request, but the plan commission wanted to make sure that that is not part of the approval because that would alternate, severely impact the appearance of the property. There was also some concern at the plan commission about the additional storage buildings, mostly because the application itself doesn't have any real information on what those buildings would look like, the exact size, dimensions, and so forth. It's just identified on the site plan. So they didn't feel comfortable with that part of the proposal either. Since that time, I've also gotten some additional requests from people in the community, et cetera, specifically about the compatibility of that type of use at that location. So as I mentioned, it's not the rental of the part that's being considered, it's the storage units that are really being considered tonight. So whether that's compatible use or not, that's something that the council would have to consider. But as far as the guidelines given in the ordinance, I think it meets those standards as far as meeting those requirements. But I would share the concerns that were raised at the plan commission meeting. So their recommendation, and I would concur with that, was to approve the conditional use with some conditions, being that the additional storage buildings would be part of a separate future application, so that would be not part of this approval. And any desire to have outside storage of other materials, boats, RVs, campers, or similar vehicles or materials would also be part of a future approval, so we could consider screening and other considerations as part of that approval. And then lastly, I did receive a question as far as what exactly the council can do as far as a vote on this. So you can vote to approve, you can vote to deny, you can vote to approve with conditions, or you can vote to table. Those are the options that you have before you this evening. Any questions?
Any questions from the council for Joe?
What was the plan commission vote?
If I recall, it was six to one in favor. Not all the members were there that evening.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, we'll go on to the applicant's statement. If you will come up to the microphone and give your name and address, please.
Adam Sunlightner, 602 West Washington Ave. in Madison, Wisconsin. And, I mean, the statement is pretty much exactly what Joe said. The one thing I did come with, I could not get exactly what it would look like in time, but I do have a few things. And the last time we talked about it was some of the retail concerns and the tax income concerns. So we're proposing an outlot here, and we'll put that up for sale for two years with a national company like CBRE for fair market value, as long as we can use it in the meantime until it gets sold or something like that. So that's one of the new things we proposed. We took the storage units off of here, and then we just have our display lines. So nothing's changed other than that from last time. And then I do have, these are some existing stores that we've done. This is a ground-up build, and it's got a little bit of the modern touches in it. So I wanted to show some of those architectural panels that we use on some of them. And these two are actually former K-marts. This one being in Arizona, this one being in Oshkosh, Wisconsin. And you can just see we added some modern touches into it, and that's kind of what we're looking to do with this one as well.
Could you hold them up, please?
Sure, I have copies too. But that's pretty much that for the statement. I just wanted to come with something that I had for you. And I know, I think the outlot will be there for sale for two years, but I think we can make something happen there and get somebody in there for a little extra road exposure and get some more people into that area, and then a little bit along the lines of what it could possibly look like. So that's what I got.
All right, anybody have any questions for the applicant?
So could you hold the site plan up again where you had the outlot? I'm not sure where, so it would border East Side Road?
Yeah, so East Side Road's right here, so we pulled the outlot right there. As you can see that.
The one entrance coming in from that side, right?
Yeah, there's an entrance there and this is mainly one. But then so the outlot would have as to whether it would be a strip mall if somebody ends up buying for, putting something up that would offer a few spaces for all the retail people.
And then you've taken the storage unit building off the east side?
Yes, it used to be right here, this is, that has been removed. And we'll worry about that at another point in time.
Any other questions for the applicant?
What discussion about the tax income has there been? You said you don't have?
They were just talking about it last time.
Do we have some sort of?
Sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Just what is the tax income difference of the types of businesses that would be on that property?
Yeah, I did pose that question to the assessor. Obviously, he would need significantly more information to give a concrete answer, but he would say for sure that from a square footage standpoint, it would be assessed lower as a warehouse self-storage than retail.
And then there's income on the retail sales that we would get as a city or not? Am I wrong there? Okay.
Is it lower than a dark store or lower than what it would be as an active Kmart?
Lower than it would be for an active retail store.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is public statements in favor. I should have mentioned at the beginning, if you wanted to make a statement, please fill out the green sheet. It's on the table back there. As of right now, I do not have anyone who has asked to speak in favor. Public statements against. Brad Davis?
Well, good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. A little new at this, but I've actually been managing Ashley in Plattville a little over a year. Been at that location for four years in total. I will tell you, my time at that location, we have seen traffic decline pretty significantly just based off of where we were traffic last year to now since Kmart closed, we're approximately down 15% to 18% traffic. Right now, I know if we had a little bit more traffic, if we had more of a retail environment in located next door, it could drive a little bit more for us, and I would have more opportunity to bring in more sales staff. I truly feel I could probably bring in one to two full-timers and a part-timer as well. I just know from a sales standpoint, traffic is down considerably. It's hard to keep good staff there when it is a commission-based job, you know, and basically they're only getting the opportunity and off of that. I really don't have much more. I know we have Troy with us tonight, our COO of our company. But I just wanted to mention, I know personally, I've seen traffic decline significantly since Kmart closed, and I truly feel more of a retail environment next door might help get a little bit more of that. So that's pretty much all I have, though.
Thank you.
Any questions?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Troy Eichman?
My name is Troy Eichman. I'm the owner and operator of the Ashley Home Store. We purchased the property in 2015 from Earl Volkman, who you might recall purchased it from Myron a few years back after it sat vacant. I think Earl did a nice job of building a good business. A little bit about us and our business, just for contextual background, I'm a second-generation working in our family business. My folks started our company back in the 1970s, kind of on accident. They were selling mobile homes, and they used to come with furniture. Well, nobody wanted the furniture, so they'd throw it in a warehouse. And now 40 years later, here I am in front of you today trying to continue to do what I think is right for not only our business but our community of Plattville, which is grow the retail environment. And so I've prepared some remarks to that end that I'd just like to share with you. Prior to tonight, I did send an email, and I've been working with Joe, sorry, Joe and Karen on the topic, and I hope some of those comments made it into your briefing today. I've also reached out to various community leaders, some are here tonight to express similar thoughts, and I've had an opportunity to speak to a couple of you directly, and so I appreciate that opportunity. I have some additional handouts tonight that I couldn't get, but I am requesting that you vote no. And I think really, there's a few reasons I want to go into the why. The first one is we've really had only about 30 days. I wasn't even aware that it had gone through the board or whatever that process is before it comes to you for a final vote. And I don't feel that 30 days is enough time to figure out anything as important as this. The second thing that I'd tell you is this is not the highest and best use. I'll tell you, this is how I feed my children, and so I know this to be true. We've actually gone on and renovated three of these types of K-marts and Target stores that have clothes throughout the Midwest and have been successful through our relationships in bringing retailers into this, because that is what we think is the highest and best use. It's a prime corner in the entire county that's really available. So to turn it into warehouse storage and a yes vote, I think, would be detrimental to not only the community but to also to our business. One of the things that attracted us to Plattville was a retail assessment. So some might say, well, yeah, you know, Troy, we do good with retail, but they do better in Dubuque. Well, furniture today would disagree with that statement. They're an organization and a publication based solely on the fundamentals of looking at retail and trying to find out where good pockets are. This one I'm looking at, and I have three years I could share with you, this was the time we bought Earl's store, who is a great guy, by the way. It put Plattville in all of the Midwest as a number-two growth opportunity for retail, number two. So to turn this into a warehouse, I think, would be incorrect. I want to pass these out, if I may. Can I hand them to you or to them? And again, that's not me saying it, it's not my opinion. It's data and facts. Joe said, "Come with data and facts." So here I am. And have more to share in that regard. I'd also tell you, we likely would not have invested in this property had we known just two or three years later it'd be turned into a warehouse. We believe that retail next to retail rises all cash registers, and that cash registers put money and taxes back into your control, into your community, into your fire, into your police, and into your roads. And I can tell you pretty confidently, we would have looked at this opportunity differently despite the retail growth because of that proximity of retail. I also read the applicant's information, and if you hadn't zeroed in on it, per their own document, they're going to bring traffic down. And I don't think any of us in Plattville want to see traffic, retail traffic, go down. Today, what's happening, as you all know, people are going across the river and buying goods and services there, and those tax dollars are going to fix potholes in Des Moines or other locations. As a community, respectfully, I suggest we need to try to keep those retail dollars here. I've spoken to a few of you about that. Attracting people to Plattville is what we need to try to do as a group. That was the other thing that we saw when we first looked at the 151 corridor. We saw a thoughtful process to try to pull people off the highway into the town to get more tax receipts. Someone 20-plus years ago put the master plan, Joe can probably tell us, I don't know. But it was real purposeful, and it's really fantastic to be a part of that roadway. Also want to share with you something else I think you should know. This was in my note, but I think it bears repeating. Other communities, we're not the only one dealing with big boxes going away, right? And what do we do with them? So I want to say two things about that. The first is the city of Rock Island has a similar situation to us. And in Rock Island, their council, their board, has denied that request to turn that into self-storage. And so most recently in 2017, I do have that article from there, and I'd like to share that with you guys here tonight as well. Can I give you that as well?
Anything else?
Yeah, I got one more.
All right, can I just do it all at once?
Sure. Sorry. I think you have that. No, that's going to be it, because I think they have this. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
In Rock Island, again, they have a similar situation where the Kmart's been vacant for a couple of years, and it's in a prime retail area like Highway 151 is. I think it's on John Deere Road, actually, in that community. But that's a letter from a local publication with some names and dates and some ways that the communities see using warehouse space in prime retail locations is not suitable. I know this is, this area is zoned retail, and that was a mindful, thoughtful zoning at the time that it was made. So retail uses are available. So a moment ago, I spoke about how we've gone in as a family and purchased a few of these and attracted. I'll tell you a story, one that's active now in Marshall, Minnesota. For those of you that don't know Marshall, Minnesota, it's a town that looks like, a lot like us in Plattville. It's about 13,000 population. It has a university. Granted, it's not the University of Wisconsin, an engineering university, but it is a university nonetheless. And we were able to, with our relationships, attract Hobby Lobby to that location. We'll be co-locating with them and opening in 2019. So there is hope for real retail and real tax valuation, things that I know that as a council you have to consider, but moreover, for reasons of bringing business to Plattville rather than over to Dubuque. So one of the things Joe said is, "Bring the facts, bring the data." So there's a handful of things since that council approval that I see have happened. One, there wasn't, sorry, not the council, but the board approval, there wasn't awareness of the local opposition that we're bringing to you tonight, and I hope you take that into consideration. The second is, and I believe you have this, the chamber today wrote you a letter recommending caution with this decision for all the reasons the chamber should. Thirdly, as I pointed out in that, other communities are denying these requests, so it wouldn't be without a precedent. Additionally, the retail growth that I wanted to point out that I shared with you, you did not have that. And despite what U-Haul may tell you that the three U-Haul businesses in town will be fine if they bring their trucks here from a corporate side and their warehouses, I'm pretty sure those three business owners will have some impact. What impact, I don't know. I think common sense can tell us. And then lastly, I did have an opportunity to speak to some storage owners in town. Of course, they're going to say more storage isn't needed. I didn't accept that as the fact, and I said, "Well, how many are in town and about what occupancy do we have?" What I learned, and I'm repeating information, so I can't say it's factual, I'm sure we could figure it out if we had more time, was about 650 to 700 units of storage exist in the town, and they're about 75% full. Per their own application, they believe that they could fit another 800 units on the site. So do we need 800 warehouse storage units in the best retail corner of the city? Again, I'd ask you to vote no. That's all.
Thank you. Myron Trannell?
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Myron Trannell. I've been in the Century 21 office, owned it since 2000, and I'm a licensed real estate broker. I would like to speak in opposition to the U-Haul business going into the Kmart. I'm not opposed to U-Haul coming to Plattville with a warehouse or a storage areas, but there are many better locations for it rather than on that particular site, because it's been said several times, that is the primus retail spot in all Grant County. If you count, do the traffic count there, where the cars go by there every day, it would, it just doesn't make a bit of sense to turn that into a warehousing. And I would ask, in your review at the, at the planning committee, whoever was on the planning committee, was it asked, do they plan on storing pods in there where people put their furniture in and warehouse them until they, if they're moving cross-country or moving from other areas? That would be an interesting fact to know, because I would think that that would be a good moneymaker for them, and then that would mean there would be heavier truck traffic in and out of there on account of that. It's just, you have an opportunity here. The store was closed sometime in the second quarter of 2017, so it hasn't been closed for a long, long time. When I sold the old Kmart to Earl Volkman, it had been closed for over four years, and nobody was too concerned about it then. When I sold Dick's Bakery to Ronnie Bolt, that was closed for over five years, and nobody was too concerned about it in then. But I heard some people express concern, "Well, it's been closed a long time." No, it hasn't. And actually, in talking with a representative of Paydick, they informed me they had approached the REIT company that owned it, and they were given a figure of 3.2 million, and they did go to Festival Foods and another retail. But those numbers don't work in Plattville, 3.2 million for use in half of a building, so it would be 1.6 plus the build-out, so you'd have been over 2 million apiece. It won't work. But that building can be activated again for retail. There are other grocery store chains, and there are other retail outlets that would do a good job in there, but I think they need to be solicited to come here. And I guess another question, I don't know if there's any city money being put into this sale or any city help, city funding, that would be a question I would like to know the answer to. This is just, there are so many places where that would work, and I'd love to see them come. There are lots up behind on the industrial park, we're trying to sell a couple lots for Tina Jones, right up on East Side Road and Enterprise Drive. The old Jenny Brothers factory's for sale for $275. That's got thousands of square feet of warehousing space, sitting there, can't get it sold. But why would we turn prime retail into warehousing when we've got plenty of it around available or plenty places that would make much more sense to use that way? It's just that that is a great corner, and there's a lot of opportunity. If you forego that, that I think down the road, you'll wonder why. So I would urge you all to vote no, or at least, for Pete's sakes, table it. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Dwayne DeYoung?
My name is Dwayne DeYoung.
I live at 1018 Woodland Road in Platteville. I recently purchased the Taco John's in front of the property. And my concern with the conditional use permit that's being requested is that it turns into storage buildings where prime retail should be. When I purchased the property, I had hopes that it would remain a retail viable location. If this use is granted, it no longer will be a retail viable location. Their paperwork indicates that traffic counts would go down. And when I purchased the Taco John's, I looked at the past history of sales there, and when Kmart closed, the sales did go down 20%. And knowing full well that that much of an effect was made on the property, even though Kmart was a relatively low-volume store, and obviously it was because they closed it. But just the fact that it was retail versus some other use provided enough traffic to make that much difference in the sales in that store. So I'm willing to ride it out, and I knew that going into it. So I'm happy to wait until something better comes along, and I'm fully confident something better will come along that will generate much more traffic for that location. And that's the long and short of it. These guys did a good job, so I don't really have any more input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, my name's Darrell Browning, 785 South Chestnut, and I am a U-Haul dealer on that. First of all, I have a question, because the fact that I can't hear and people don't really know how this works, you've got to get your mouth up next to it, it'd be cloud on that. Are you going to do trucks and trailer rents out of there? Okay, having that be known, here's what has happened to me with dealing with U-Haul. I've been a U-Haul dealer for eight years. When I took U-Haul, my first year's commission was 1,500. Five years later, I worked that into 20,000. When I did that, I proposed to U-Haul that they turn me into a U-Haul central or where I would do nothing but U-Hauls, rentals, trailer hitches, boxes, everything. What did they do to me? They opened up another dealer. Then they allowed Mary to come from out on College Farm Road back into town and cut my income from U-Haul by three-fourths. So when you're dealing with U-Haul, I can say this. If you are a renter of a U-Haul piece of equipment, they are a wonderful company. If you are a dealer, they are not so reputable on that. So take what they say with a grain of salt on that. And the other thing is, I agree with these two gentlemen over here. There are plenty of locations in Platteville on that where this storage facility would be great on that, but to take that piece of land and cut that volume of customers and consumers down, I personally do not feel that that would be a wise decision for the city on that. The other thing is, what he would do to me today, it will probably cut me in half as far as my income from U-Haul on that. And the other two dealers, I would assume that would happen to them too, at least. Because I ask you, you know, if you're going to buy a roll of tape, toilet tissue, and dish soap, where do you head? Walmart on that, because you know, when you get there, they have everything. Versus U-Haul, sooner than them come to me on that, they will go to the big store, which is going to directly impact me. It will directly impact the bowling alley, and it will directly impact Mary Burbach, who also has U-Haul here in Platteville. The other thing is, U-Haul, I have been to Madison, to the U-Haul distributing points, and they don't have all the equipment all the time on that. I am known as what a chase dealer on that. That means I will chase equipment to fulfill U-Haul's demand on that. I have been to Reedsburg, I have been to Viaroca, I have been to Beloit, and that's just this year on that. That's not including the prior years. And I try, when somebody makes a rent with me, I try to make sure that equipment is at my place so when the people show up to move, it's there on that. But just because U-Haul, big is coming, it's not going, it's not directly going to improve the service that U-Haul provides to a community on that. So, like I say, I mean, you know, this goes through, it will have a big impact on three of us.
Thank you. Those are the only requests I've had for public statements. The next one will be public statements in general, and I have not received any requests in that way. Council discussion. Any questions for staff, comments?
What was Paydick's input on this? Did Paydick market this very much, or any prospects?
Generally, the city has not been involved in marketing. Neither the city nor Paydick have been involved with marketing it, because it's a privately-owned property. So typically, so Paydick's mission is to market the industrial park and typically towards industrial uses. I know that they had discussion. I know that E.L.A. probably felt out some conversations with some parties that might be interested locally. With respect to city involvement, you know, we typically are not going to get involved in marketing a property unless there is a private market failure.
Why hasn't U-Haul, or has they considered other locations? Oh, sorry, I'm in the mic, my bad. Has U-Haul considered other locations for the warehouses, or why is it specifically at the Kmart location?
Would you come up to the microphone, please?
The reason we consider the Kmart is we're a retail company. We've got a full line of products, full line of moving supplies. We're the U.S.' largest hitch installer, so we're retail first. We need to be on a main road so that we can get that, those people to come in and come by us.
That being said, if you weren't allowed that lot, have you looked at the other properties in town? Have you weighed your options?
We won't look. So if it can't be seen by the main road or the highway, there's no reason for us to be there. I mean, and the thing is, remember, I mean, we're a drop-off destination, just like Browning Motors. The people that are coming in here to drop off U-Hauls, these are the first businesses they're seeing. So when they drop off their vehicle for the first time moving here and get done moving, they're going to eat at Taco John's. They're going to go get their furniture at Ashley Furniture. So we're going to bring these people in that are going to use your other retail businesses that we already have. And hopefully, with the addition of putting an outlot for sale, we'll be able to bring in more retail as well so that it brings that up more, just like what we're looking at getting for the community.
So you said this outlot, would you be marketing it? Would U-Haul be marketing this outlot, or would it just be for sale on it, or what?
We would put it for sale for two years with a national company, so CBRE or, I mean, I'm sure Century 21 is a national company as well. So we'll put it for sale at fair market value with a national company, and we'll be marketed, so.
Any other questions?
There's been reference, just a minute, there's been reference to traffic volume and that this would actually decrease traffic volume? I'm trying to look at this use chart.
The page they're referring to is the sustainability one, to where what they're looking at is people using the pickup trucks for their own use. So with one U-Haul and more U-Haul dealerships in the area, people can drive less, thus creating less CO2 emissions. This is what that's referring to.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I guess I, not, I have a question, but it wouldn't be for him, so do we have that?
All right, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Well, to those who spoke on behalf of Ashley and Taco John's, is there, has there been opportunity for them to kind of brainstorm and pull their strings to try to recruit people to fill that space? Is there time? If it were tabled, would that be done? Is there an avenue? Who gets to speak?
Okay, normally, we don't have people come back up to the microphone. We'll go ahead.
Well, I can answer to her question.
Well, if you want to just answer. As Karen said, this is a private property, so the city has not been involved at all in marketing it, nor would we intend to get involved. And the question was asked, does the city have any money invested in this? My understanding is we do not. We do not intend to invest money in this. So this is a private property that's been marketed by some holding company, probably, and people certainly in the area knew it was available so that someone would have had the opportunity, just like U-Haul, to actually make contact with that company and to make an offer. But, Dwayne, I will allow you to speak, and then I would, this again, is council discussion.
Just on that particular question. I happened to be in Reedsburg, I don't know, maybe two, three weeks before the notice came out in July. And I was talking to a developer there on a different property in Reedsburg, and he found out about the Kmart. He didn't know anything about it. He had purchased the one in Portage and now has turned that into a different retail store. He purchases them and leases them out to retail locations. So that one did get converted, but he had no idea that it was even there or available. And I was going to contact him back, but I found out that this was already in process. So then, that just kind of went to the wayside. But this has been a relatively quick process. So I think, given a little bit more time, there are probably some opportunities out there.
Another council discussion.
I know, my recollection is that the Kmart, I looked it up today because I wondered when it closed, and it closed in March of 2017, so this property's been available for well over a year. I agree, it's not been the city's response, I mean, the city doesn't own this property.
It was advertised three months over a year, but I'm sorry.
But I mean, I know the Kmart closed in March of 17. And so, everybody's known, I mean, people have known it's been empty. And the city, like Eileen said, doesn't own the property. And so, in the industrial park, we own property, and therefore, we try to. We have responsibility to sell it since the city owns it and Paydick markets it. I do know, because I serve on Paydick's board, that we did reach out, but, I mean, Paydick doesn't have money to buy a building like that either. So I understand people saying, "It's a great retail location." I understand that. It's been a great retail location since whenever. But Kmart was there and closed, and for a year and a half, we've had, we'll just say, a year and three months then, we've had nothing there. And to my knowledge, there haven't been too many people running around trying to say, "What can we do here?", until all of a sudden, somebody comes in and says, "This is what I want to do here."
Can I answer that question? Can I answer that question? I approached the REIT company three times that owned those. Three times, and after it was sold, I couldn't get price.
Okay, Myron, without you being on the microphone, I really, you know, and I appreciate that others feel that they have made a good faith effort to actually contact the company that was evidently in charge of selling it. Again, the city is not involved in that. And so, there's really no way that we could know what was happening or not happening until we did receive a request from U-Haul. It is a request for a conditional use permit. I guess the question is whether or not council members, and maybe some others, feel that this is the highest and best use for the property. Again, I'm not sure that whether or not we agree that traffic count will go up or down is a factor, but the traffic count obviously has been down because the Kmart wasn't there. So really, the question before us isn't whether or not the building should be continued to be marketed. If we decide a conditional use permit, U-Haul will move forward. If we decide not to, I'm not sure what U-Haul will do. They may be on a timeline where they have to walk away and say, "We tried, and we will not be able to do this in Platteville." So again, retail would be great. Nobody's disputing that. No one has come forward as a retail operator to this point.
I have a comment. I believe that retail is the best use of this property. This was my first thought about this when I read this in my council packet. Also, as far as amount of time, we used to have spec buildings built, and they were sitting around as much as four or five years before they were sold. So we have done this over a long-term basis as far as waiting for buildings to sell. So about a year and a half, whatever it is that Kmart has stood there, isn't very long. So I think we should take more time on this and seek to have retail there because it is an excellent spot as far as continuation of retail.
All right, any other comments?
Yeah, my question is to you. It's not in your notes about how you are going to work with the franchisees or the dealers. We have three dealers in town, as Mr. Browning mentioned, and they are small business owners. And this town is built on small business owners. So how is a large, extremely profitable business going to come to town and guarantee that these small business owners are going to survive? Which is a big question for me. I want to know. How are we going to have that opportunity in this town? We build our town on small businesses, and most of us know that. So if my big franchise, I'm a franchisee. If the company came into my town, I would have to figure that out, what I would do with my business. So that will be the big question that I would have, is how are you going to maintain the type of revenue that these three dealers are bringing into your business if a big, huge company comes into this town? That's what I would like to know, from you or from whomever can give me that answer. Well, I don't know, talk to the president or the chair.
I'll let you come up here.
Well, U-Haul, as a company for the 70-plus years, was founded on small business owners. That's how we started. Mary is actually going to come and work for us as a general manager, so Scott will close down. But that leaves us two, and as you said about chasing equipment, there's a spot right down the road that can come and get our equipment whenever they need it. Our goal is to take care of the dealers, because the dealers are the ones that, God, is here to be able to buy these buildings. So hopefully, they make more money.
So the dealers came to you and asked you to bring your store in?
No, no, no.
Okay.
What I'm saying is that the dealers can come to us and get equipment whenever they need it. They have their customer base that they can take care of. Instead of driving to Reedsburg or wherever we send all these customers to, because we can't help this market. they just come drive down the street and get the equipment for their customers.
So they've lost a customer?
No, they can come get, they can come get the equipment, pick it up and then rent it to them at their location. So more or less, it's just location. Instead of driving to Reedsburg, he can come and get the truck here, bring it back to his location and help their customers. But one of them would close because they're gonna come, the plan is to be the general manager of that location.
Does that answer your question, Barb?
Yes, but I'm curious if we all knew that, but it's not the question here since it's a private company. So, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other council discussion?
So for consistency, I would appreciate it if Ashley could answer my question.
All right, if you want to speak into the microphone a little bit more, Robin, I think it'll be easier for our people to hear, so.
I'm just asking if Ashley can give any response to any ability to help recruit to fill that space.
The answer's absolutely, it's yes, with an underline and a bold and a exclamation behind it.
In a short list?
Sure.
Not that you have to say all of those, but I'm just saying, is it?
Yeah, I can just tell you some of our relationships and from that you can decide whether I'm worthy of, of, of attempting. Despite what President Nichols explained, I, I'm share a lot line. I wasn't aware and didn't get any information that it was for sale. Had I had that information, I could have possibly figured through all of that. Kmart is going through a bit of a challenge and how and where and when things get marketed has been challenging. In fact, I did find purchasing the Kmart in Mason City, Iowa, you could go look at that to be a, a challenge in the acquisition because of the secrecy of that type of transaction. I'm certainly not trying to take somebody's deal. That's not what we as a family do. What we as a family do is try to drive value. So to speak to that specifically, we have relationships with Fairway Foods, with Hy-Vee, with Hobby Lobby, with Dunham Sports, with Dick's Sporting Goods, with Ross, with Marshalls, with Home Goods, with TJ Maxx. In several of our locations that we own, we've gone into these locations and brought them into these locations to be renters. We don't find it to be a, a robust rental. What we do, the way my folks thought about it and the way they taught me to think about it, was to think for the long term. Not think for the short-term, bird in the hand, but be sure that we're mindful of the long term. And by that, we don't always get great market rents, especially in big box conversions that we'll do or malls that we'll go into. But I do and can and would, if provided an opportunity, to do so, participate. Obviously, we invested heavily in the store next to it. So I have a vested financial interest in the outcome of what goes there. And I will bring whatever resources I can to this process. I respect the fact that it's a private matter, not a city matter, but the city will determine the use. So we're linked. And again, I'll do what I can to bring the best situation to Platteville possible.
Any other council discussion? Otherwise, the next step would be to close the public hearing. Any discussion from the council?
Well, I still have a concern. I still have a concern about the competition with a dealership. That is something I'm gonna have to work through for me personally. To have the company come in against a dealer is difficult for me to understand. So anyway, that's my final statement.
Anyone else? Otherwise, we need a motion to close the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and we'll vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, common council action. The request is for a conditional use permit for 1425 East Business Highway 151. Is there a motion?
I move we table the motion.
I second that.
Is there a time specific to table it? Do you want it brought back next time or at a future date?
I have no particular time limit on this. If you can use the words reasonable, whatever reasonable means to you.
So your motion is to table and you have a second. All right. We'll vote.
I'm sorry, who seconded that? Was that?
I did.
Stockhausen?
I did.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
No.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
No.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you all for coming. We're going to go on to consideration the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on the single vote, motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer separate discussion and action. Council minutes from 8/21/18 and also 8/28/18. B is payment of bills. C is the financial report for August. D is appointments to boards and commissions. Unfortunately, I have none this evening, but I would encourage all council members to look at the information that is in your packet every time about the people that we need to serve on boards and commissions and committees because we are bumping up against a lot of vacancies. And I really need your help in recruiting people for these particular boards, commissions or committees. Licenses, extend license premises of NICS on Saturday, September 15th to include the parking lot behind the Owl Cafe Lot 3 from 10:00 a.m. to midnight for a beanbag tournament followed by live music. Also, one-year and two-year operator licenses to sell and serve alcohol are in the packet. Permits, a banner permit for the Relay for Life on March 17th, 2019 to March 30th, 2019. Street closing requests, South Hickory Street between Greenwood Avenue and Pine Street for St. Augustine University Parish Newman Olympics on Saturday, September 22nd from noon to 8:00 p.m. Next is a resolution 1820 proclaiming October 2018 as United Nations Month. And finally, the Halloween trick-or-treating hours which have been set for Wednesday, October 31st from 4:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Is there a motion?
I move we approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second and we'll vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next are citizens' comments, observations and petitions if any, and I have had no one sign up to speak this evening. So I'm going to go on to the reports in the packet. Next, first is Housing Authority Board. Killian?
I have no additions to the minutes.
Police and Fire Commission, Francis?
No addition.
Historic Preservation Commission, Killian?
I have no additions to the two sets of minutes.
Community Saferoutes Committee, Francis?
We're just in the thick of trying to figure out how to improve Camp Street, make it safer for pedestrians, kids, vehicles, all that good stuff.
Parks, Forests and Recreation Committee, Francis?
No addition.
Museum Board, Stockhausen?
If you read your notes, it states there's a number of activities coming. And if you need more information, you can go on their website, which also is in the notes. And I highly recommend you support our museum and all of its activities. Some of it's new. The primary one is going and reviewing the World War I veteran, veterans' displays on the second floor of the school, of the main museum. It's very well done. So I would appreciate that you've considered taking that time. Thank you.
And I would just add, and I'm sure that you were there as well, but the historic reenactment again was just really wonderful this past weekend during Derry Day. Water and Sewer Financial Report is in the packet, Airport Financial Report in the packet, and Department Progress Reports are in the packet. Anyone have any questions or comments on any of those?
Water and Sewer meets tomorrow and I'll have a question about the cost of chemicals, so I'm forewarning, Howard.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, we're on to the action item, which is City Hall Boiler Replacement.
Yes, thank you. Current City Hall boiler was installed sometime in the early 90s. I don't have an exact date. Some of you may remember that. As staff was preparing to shut off the boiler at the end of the heating season in the spring, we noticed steam coming from a joint. We consulted with five different plumbers regarding the boiler. Consensus was that replacement was necessary at a cost of $45,000 to $50,000 and include a water softener for use to extend the life of a boiler. All the plumbers that we solicited advice from refused to quote us for repair of the gasketed joints because the boiler is beyond its useful life and they're concerned that you start taking it apart and everything else will start breaking and they weren't willing to do anything other than quote us time and materials. Basically, you know, if it takes five hours, great. If it takes 25 hours, we're gonna pay for 25 hours, kind of a thing. And they weren't willing to, to quote what it would take. We're concerned that if we budget for this in 2019, the money won't be available until January 1st, in which case, you know, we'll have a, a delay and we'll have the possibility of the boiler failing before it can be replaced. And if that happens in the middle of winter, we'll probably end up getting a premium charge for expediting everything. So we're recommending approval now. It would delay our air exchange project to 2019. And then in our budget and fiscal impact, what we're recommending, based on the money that has spent, been spent and contracted for to date, if we purchased a $50,000 boiler, we would be, have a deficit of just under $18,000. We've purchased an end loader already and we just opened bids for street sweeper. Those came in under budget, so we're recommending that we approve this project and that the deficit come from the street CIP money that we've saved from those bids. And there's a, we would have a budget transfer item for that.
Any questions?
Were those the funds that you expected or hoped to use for the air exchange project?
Yes.
So is this estimate that you received for installation too?
Yes.
So that is total. And we have this remodeling or master, kind of, that's not a master plan. I guess it's a, I don't know, a conceptual plan. I'm assuming that this boiler will not need to be replaced if in fact we make moves of offices from one place to another, that this is, that it would be able to be ducted or whatever needs to be done. I don't know if we have ducts or what we have.
It's, it's the radiators, but what we, we specifically posed that question to Delta 3 and its sub consultant, JDR Engineering. And they said that, that if we replace the boiler, it, it can and will be used in the future configuration of the building.
And just, I guess, as an overall update, that's one of the reasons why we delayed in bringing this item to you is to wait for that feedback from the HVC engineering consultant. And so we received that last week. Delta 3 now has that and is going to be forwarding to us a potential staging plan for the potential renovation, interior renovation and cost estimates so that we can potentially incorporate that into our capital improvement plan.
No questions? Well, I think I don't want breaking pipes in the dead of winter. So I would be in favor of replacing the boiler.
So this is an action item for tonight, right?
Yes, it is an action item.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Then I move to approve staff contracting for a new boiler for City Hall at a cost up to $50,000 with any deficit coming from the City Hall CIP account to be transferred from the street equipment CIP line item.
I second.
Well, let's all rush.
Motion and a second, we'll vote.
Let's all rush to stay warm.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Sharp? Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, on to information and discussion. A planned unit development for 545 West Adams, Joe.
Yes, this is the far end of Adam Street where it dead ends. This was the same property where the proposed developer had tried to get approval to construct the two duplexes on that lot previously. This is a revision of that concept. It would be a three-unit residential building. Each unit 1,200 square feet plus, no floor, or one floor, no basement. Two bedroom, two bath, attached two-car garage. Basically, it'd be the same building, the duplex that was constructed on the former city EMS lot by the water tower. Same floor plan, same concept with one additional unit attached to it. So instead of duplex, it's, it's a three-plex. But since it is a three-unit building, it does require the planning and development approval. The planning commission did consider this last night at their meeting. There were two motions to approve with some conditions regarding stormwater, but there was no consensus reached on either one of them. So at this point, we don't have a formal motion from the planning commission. But that seemed to be the main concern that came up was the, the stormwater impacts because there's a main drainage ditch adjacent to that property. So this will be on for a public hearing in action at the next meeting.
Questions for Joe?
This lot does not meet the requirements as far as three structures. It's R2.
Correct.
So you're using a POD to?
So he could legally?
Get around that.
A single-family or a duplex, but not the three-unit building.
You could put a duplex in there, but not three units. Okay, then I was, I'm gonna sit down and take a look at what, what is, what do you consider to be the front yard of the building facing toward Adam Street? Is that correct?
Yes. Street, it's actually got frontage on Hickory Street as well, but it's very narrow.
Hickory Street frontage, what is that, the backyard?
Well.
Side yard?
By ordinance, it's a street yard because it has.
Street yard.
The street. So it's got two street yards, which kind of eliminates the rear yard. So the rest are side yards. So the proposal does meet the required setback, the ordinance.
I may have some more questions later. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, hearing done. The next item is establishment of consistent outdoor warning siren activation guidelines and elimination of the noon siren.
Nicken over here by Nicola.
I want to hear from our fire chief.
Okay, so what I've gone through and put in your, your information there is just a guideline for the activation of the emergency siren for weather situations and some changes that we're making on our end. One thing we've already done is eliminated using the siren as a fire notification siren when they page out the fire department for an incident. With the change in technology, modern technology, having pagers, the cell phones, we receive the notification through our, our pagers as well as through message. the notification through our pagers as well as through messaging, through a couple apps on our devices that everybody carries around with us. So, we are notified three to four different ways already. And the issue with using the siren is it confuses people. A lot of people still don't know the difference between an outdoor warning for a storm versus the siren for a fire call. So, to eliminate some of that confusion, because the sirens are ultimately for severe weather and warning of citizens who are outside of any imminent threat coming. So, we'd like to use those for their designated primary use and eliminate any confusion by also eliminating the noon whistle or use of it as a indicator that it is noon in town. That tone that is used for the noon whistle is the identical sound to the outdoor warning tone, and it does sound for a sufficient amount of time that it is, could be confusing if it were to be a stormy day, that people could take that as it's a means that they need to seek shelter, or they may ignore it, thinking it is a, the noon siren. If it goes off at 11:58, they may not necessarily think that it's actually a storm activation, that it's, if they don't listen to it completely or something. The other thing is only one out of the seven sirens actually activates during that. So, it's not that it's a noon siren for the entire city. It is just the downtown area of Platteville. And there's also several residents in the area that have always complained of that because of it is loud, it's during the day, if they're at home. Some people do work other shifts besides just first shift, so they are sleeping. There are apartments and individuals that do sleep during the daytime and have complained that that siren does go off at noon during the time that they're sleeping. If you've been in the downtown area when it goes off and you're outside, you kind of have to stop any conversations or whatever you're doing for it to quit because it is quite loud. And we just feel that the best use of the outdoor storm sirens are for storm warning and to eliminate any confusion that anybody would have is that we just use it for that intended reason and that reason only. So, that is where this has come to with my suggestion that we stop using it for a noon whistle.
Do you still be testing the sirens? I think it's on the first Wednesday of each month.
We would test it during, basically from early spring through late fall. We wouldn't test it over the winter months, just for the fact that you don't have those severe weather outdoor warrant, events over the winter timeframe. So, we would not, we would not do those tests over the winter months.
Does anyone else have any questions?
There isn't really an actual purpose anymore for the noon whistle, is there? It's kind of outdated, right? That's, yeah, okay.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Kind of disagree. We still find that it's noon every day when it goes off. I mean, I was curious if you have, like, has it been thrown out there and has, have people responded? We would still like to have the noon whistle.
Out of, I would say probably 30 to 40 people I've talked to in the last month, I've only had a couple that said they would be in favor of keeping it. So, the general consensus of people that I've spoken to are in favor of having it go away.
I assume this has gone by the volunteer fire? Is that who you're talking about? Because I'm thinking of...
No.
...I would be serving people who work outside.
I've, I've talked to, obviously, some of the other firefighters. I've talked to just people throughout the community when I see them, people that come in and out of my place of employment, just people around the community. And we've just kind of quizzed some of them and just asked them, you know, just general feedback from the, from the public.
I just, it's a staple, right? There'll be some response when it goes away.
There will be some. A lot of communities though, this is, it's a, it's a thing for this area. A lot of people not from this part of Wisconsin come to Platteville and they're like, what is that? What's going on? They don't even understand what it's for, just because it's not done in many communities outside of like this little Grant County area.
I've appreciated it and I've been highly annoyed by it, too. The dogs go crazy because it went off. It's frustrating, but it's just one of those things that orients your day.
The last time this came up, I spoke in favor of keeping it. I, I understand times change and so I may have to accept the fact that perhaps it's, it's sort of gone past its time, so. But this will be brought back and if you have questions, call Ryan, he can answer your question.
All right. Thank you.
Next is sunshine fund policy.
So, the city has traditionally had a sunshine fund policy. We also have a sunshine fund account and the policy has just provided a framework within which those funds would be expended. And that, that fund exists to acknowledge major life events for both our employees and for council members, but also helps support, to the extent we have team-building events, we draw from those funds to support that activity as well. This, as a policy that hasn't traditionally come before the council, we didn't make major changes to this. We just tried to update it to actually reflect what was going on in practice within the city. But we decided to bring it before you because we did add a council team event as, as an item in here, since council members are no longer being paid, so that we could at least acknowledge your service with a sort of a year-end dinner as we did last year and have that be an authorized activity.
Questions on this sunshine policy? All right, next is contract 1218 Hillside Cemetery paving.
Yes, thank you. We had $35,000 for a project to pave roads in Hillside Cemetery from our perpetual care fund. We opened bids, we opened a single bid for the work, the base bid for the streets north and south of the main entry road, the ones that were in the worst shape. The bid came in at just under $40,000. There was an alternate bid to do the entry road also, which would be an additional $20,000. We're basically recommending that we do the base bid, the, the worst roads for the 3967720 and transfer additional funds from the perpetual care fund to cover the difference.
Questions, anyone?
Yes, I may have asked this before. What's going to be the construction of the road as far as asphalt down? How much gravel is there going to be?
The plan is that city crews would do the gravel and gravel shaping, 12 inches of gravel, and then we would do two and a half inches of asphalt on top.
How much gravel will there be depth underneath the two and a half inches?
12 inches.
How much?
12.
12 inches, okay.
So, I have a question. So, will all of the current pieces of road or whatever be taken away? Are, are we putting gravel on top of those pieces of chunks of stuff?
No, we would need to, we would need to excavate a lot of that out in order to put, put that in, in order to keep the, the roads at roughly the same elevations that they are. We, we need to match in.
And that city crew work that would be done?
Yes.
Because this is for paving only.
Paving only, yes.
And do we, do we believe that this bid was higher than we expected because there was only one bid, because it's late in the year? I mean...
I, I think that part of it is late in the year, but I think that it's also a reflection of oil prices over, for the year. We've had, you know, slight raises in oil prices since budgeting last year.
How mu, how much road is this? Is this a mile? Is it two miles? I mean, I see it in green, but I don't have a clue how.
I...
Do you have, I mean, I was kind of wondering.
I don't have the, the number with me right at the moment. I, I'd have to get that. I had it in, the bid item was, was in tons and I'd have to look at that.
And this doesn't replace all the roads? Not only, doesn't it not replace the entrance road, but it, there's also parts of the cemetery? This doesn't replace, this isn't a full replacement of all internal roads, not the entrance road? Is that correct?
All internal roads except, except the entrance road. On this map, it would be both of the green ones, the green ones, but not the red. The area that's actually to the south, if you will, is the Calvary Cemetery that is owned by the Catholic Church. So, and those other roads in that one corner that don't have any markings at all are part of the Catholic cemetery.
But not the first three? The three on the south side that are part, are those ours or are those part of...
They're also in green and those would be paved on that south side.
But is that our cemetery or Calvary Cemetery?
The, the city cemetery starts at Highway 8081 and there's, there's a line of trees there that kind of delineates where the Calvary Cemetery starts.
We are only paving roads on the city property?
Yes.
Just hoping to get a little help from, you know, our neighbors.
Any other questions? All right, DNR Forestry Grant.
Yes, so I'm coming before you today to request permission to apply for and manage a grant from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. This is a matching grant where which we would be utilizing our existing forestry efforts and using that as our, our match and applying for $10,000 from the DNR to help with removal of ash trees on private property. So, essentially, we'd run it similar to our lead service line where we are, residents can apply to receive a portion of their ash tree removal and ash tree replacement. And we would then use the DNR money to reimburse ourselves, which we would reimburse the homeowner for those efforts. The one change I may bring to you before next week and I'm, or two weeks from now, I'm going to check with the DNR to see if we can possibly use some of our chipping monies to also apply for more grant funds, which then might allow us to increase our chipping budget for next year. Because with the Emerald Ash Borer, we are going to expect to see an increase of materials going to the city dump site. And we, we spend a significant amount of money already chipping that up and we expect to need more to account for that. With that, I'd also like to just point out a reminder to homeowners that Platteville has been confirmed to be, to have Emerald Ash Borer. What that means, if you have ash trees, mostly green ash, white ash, as a homeowner and those trees are unprotected and you do not protect them soon, they will be dying or in all likelihood will be dying. I think it's got about 99 point something percent lethality. So, this is going to be a major impact on especially our private residents and this would be something the city can do to help alleviate some of that, although it's still going to be a major impact on homeowners.
The assistance will be just to those people that have ash trees?
Correct, yes. This would be specifically targeting those that have ash trees on their property that would, they would like to remove and replace. And again, this is only allowing us to apply for that. There's no guarantee that we would get that grant. We are targeting a general DNR grant and this is, this is something that would qualify. However, it's not going to be the only, obviously, application. They'll receive many applications and have to go through what they think is, is their highest priority.
So, without that money, how to, how do cities incentivize homeowners to get rid of their ash trees?
For the most part, cities do not incentivize their residents to get rid of their ash trees. Their ash trees die and they're responsible for taking them down. This is just something unique to us that we are trying to do for our residents that would be, allow us to utilize our existing efforts in a, in a manner that would actually provide them some assistance as well. So, the city intends to remove about 20% of our ash trees every year for the next five years, because all ash trees are not going to die instantly, but they're going to be in a state of decline over the next several years. And once they get to a certain point, then it becomes more expensive and harder to take down because the wood becomes brittle and more dangerous to take down. So, we're trying to stay ahead of that and, you know, we've already been sending out reminders to homeowners in our city newsletter several years ago that Emerald Ash Borer is coming. It's now here. Unfortunately, I don't know if everyone's going to get this message and I think it's going to be, a lot, a lot of people are going to wait unfortunately until it's too late and that's a mistake. But this will help incentivize them to not wait and hopefully alleviate some of that pressure on, instead of having all that material go to our dump in one year, hopefully homeowners will be able to take advantage of this program this year. We'll try to apply again in the future and we can spread that out a little bit as well on the private side.
So, is there any problem going out to the dump and using items that have just, using what's just been chipped?
No.
With Emerald Ash Borer?
Yeah, that's a great question. No, all of Wisconsin is now in quarantine and that sounds bad, but it actually makes it much easier for municipalities and counties to handle because we don't need to worry about transferring where materials are going. You know, prior to that happening about a year ago, you couldn't move that material if you were in a quarantine zone to any other zone that wasn't quarantine. Now, there's basically no restrictions. It's, I mean, I, I think Wisconsin put up a good effort to try to slow the spread, but I think we're recognizing that, you know, unless you're going to spend the money to protect the trees, they're, they're going to die.
And did you say already what the first signs of presence of the bug is?
Sure.
And then, what do they do to protect it?
Sure, I can go, yeah. So, the signs that I mainly look for, I actually look for woodpecker activity. So, woodpeckers on ash trees tend to grab onto the bark and they have what's called flecking. So, if you look in an ash tree, you almost see a camel pattern with white where the woodpeckers have kind of scraped away. Also, because the, the bug doesn't affect the root system, you'll often see the, the trees sprout out near the base. So, you'll see additional sprouts near that base where the tree is trying to survive. You know, it's unable to get the resources from the leaves and, you know, get water and stuff to the leaves. So, it's sprouting out lower to try to stay alive. Those are the two main things I look for. At this point, though, I hate to be like I'm not even looking that much. If your tree doesn't have it, it will soon. It's going to, it's going to happen. So, you know, we want homeowners to try to plan ahead and be prepared. And a while ago, we presented them with three options, which was to remove now and replace, to wait, knowing that it's going to die in the future, or to protect your tree. You asked about protection a little bit, so the city has been protecting just a few of our ash trees, not very many. And we do a direct injection, so I would describe it as an IV for a tree, where we're injecting chemicals into that tree to protect them. There are also drip injections where you can sprinkle the chemical around the roots. It's not known to be as effective as the injections, but it is better than doing nothing. But this isn't a one-time treatment. This is something that has to be doing, done every year, every other year, every three years to ensure that tree is going to be protected until the bug passes, dies, but in all likelihood, it's going to be for the life of that tree as long you want to protect it.
Thank you. Sorry. Indulge.
All right, any other questions? All right, that includes our, concludes our information and discussion. We have a work session, financial overview. Karen, are we going to, off camera, to the table? work session, financial overview. Karen, are we going to, off camera to the table or are we going to just here?
Yep. That's what we're going to do. Move to the table.
All right, so we are going off camera and then we will adjourn after we have our work session.